Okay, item D then is the second review of some of our newer modified board policies and AEs. And perhaps we can open those up and just make sure we're real clear on all of them and if there's any questions. The first one is Policy 2105, Mission of the District, which is just a -- we added a question to that as part of our mission. And I don't know any questions on that. Policy 2510, Adoption of Textbooks. Let's probably stare forward again.
Did we already have a policy on adoption of textbooks?
Yes.
So this was...
A change.
A change?
Yeah, as you can see, the darker text in there is what the proposed change is, and that comes from Neola.
And what was the main -- what precipitated that language? If any, if we know.
If you go to the back, the bottom of the policy, the second page, you can see the statutes that changed.
They're all bolded also.
Okay, but more generally?
Usually the changes are a result of either judicial rulings or minor changes in statute. That's the reason why we joined Neola. In the past, we were relying on our own knowledge to update them or our local legal staff. And by joining Neola, we're constantly updated to make sure we're continually in compliance.
Those, all those options that we aren't using in there, were those part of the previous policy?
No.
Well, it says it's not in ours.
So when we adopted the policy, we did not check those things.
Right.
Okay.
Ours was initially just a little more open, probably than that. We didn't really get into that. But with that said, you know, it does now have to include all of the bolded based. So those were the changes in that one, the state statutes. And then the next policy was for professional staff, 3120.08. And again, this was due to our implementation of our employee handbook, and this would be employment of personnel for co-curricular or extracurricular activities. And then the next was the AG concerning employment of summer school staff. And that again is just an AG, but it was a change. And again, it is within our handbook that we're creating. And then Policy 3140 and 4140, both are for termination and resignation or non-renewal and resignation. And one is, 3140 is for professional staff and 4140 is for support staff. So those again were rewritten due to the handbook. And then Policy 7217 concerns weapons. And again, that was due to a law change in the state of Wisconsin, Wisconsin statute change.
I had a question or two about that. How is this going to work? Any volunteer is going to sign an agreement so that regardless of whether or not we know they are a concealed carry licensee, they have to follow that? Or we only do that if they tell us they're a licensee? I'm not quite sure of the mechanics of that. Every volunteer will have a standard, sign some standard agreement, and that will be incorporated into it whether or not they are a concealed carry licensee?
We do have a volunteer form that people sign, and we're in the process of making modifications to that, so...
But I think we don't always have to do that. And that person who's a concealed carry person today, or who is not today may tomorrow become one.
Right.
And unless we were planning to make an incumbent on them to notify us of the change and then to act on it, it would make more sense for each volunteer as they go through the paperwork to just acknowledge this is the district policy. And then by signing this, should you now be or later become, you acknowledge and agree to follow this policy. Even, I think the policy even discussed the potential for a, you know, the uniqueness of a person who's a volunteer who also happens to be driving their own child. But another, so if they're driving their own child and they're a volunteer, they would then not have to, because they're transporting their own child.
If it's only them.
If they're transporting any other student, then they would fall under that policy and have to, you know, there was a lot of discussion on it as far as how far do you go? And I think in the policy and in the responsibility, the responsibility falls to the volunteer to understand, follow, and be forthright about it. If we were to learn later that they weren't, we would take action, but it's difficult in advance to, you know, we're not going to have metal detectors to drive students from one place to another. So there is an incumbent behavior on the part of the volunteer to understand the policy.
And there is a portion of exceptions, of course, to this for law enforcement personnel.
Interesting in the policy was how it defined weapons. And I think that was partly why it needed to be rewritten, because if we looked at the policy the way it was originally written, did our food service people run the risk of violating the policy by virtue of using a kitchen utensil to cut because of the length? So this policy took a lot of that into consideration and acknowledged that certain behaviors that occur within the normal function of the school and the school's operation would be exempt by virtue of those positions, but did not extend it into areas outside. So the standard definition of, was it three inches, five, was five or three inches for the length of the knife?
Three inches.
Three inches, okay. Which is basically the standard amount of a, if I remember right, the name patch. If you wore a name, it was that length, that three inches.
But is that restricted, I guess, as I looked at it, it looked like even a student could have that?
Well, two...
A three inch?
Less than three inch, which would be considered, as we read through it, that was permissible as long as it's not a, where do they use a term, switchback? Or there's a term for lockback?
Lockback.
Lockback. So a lockback of any length, or is it, no, it was greater than three inches. So if you open it, it locks, and it's less than three inches, which would be considered like a Swiss Army knife, that actually looks like, based on the new statute, that that would be allowed.
For students?
For students.
Okay.
That was my understanding, because we approved it.
That's how it reads.
Students.
That's how it...
This is for volunteers. Our policy...
This doesn't change students.
There's three policies we went through. Wasn't one of them for students?
No.
It wasn't in this round?
No.
Okay. There was some discussion, but John, it's just that apparently that policy's not out yet.
Okay.
But it was discussed and not approved yet, but that's one of the things we're asking for understanding of.
I guess I don't see where this policy restricts it in that way. In fact, in the second sentence, it addresses staff members, students, visitors. And then I don't see where it goes on later than to restrict exceptions only to...
To those specific instances.
To certain staff.
Right. I think the issue is that a knife is not considered a weapon legally unless it is at least three inches in length. So we, students are not to have knives in school.
Where is that?
That's in the...
A separate?
Yes, in the student...
Policy?
Yeah. In the handbook and, yeah, there, I mean, it's in a number of places. But the police are not going to necessarily charge someone for having a weapon, would not charge a student for having a weapon if that blade were less than three inches long.
Okay. But they, by virtue of the, at least the high school or any of the middle school or any hand, student handbook, it says no knives.
No knives.
And they all sign that, or a parent signs that?
There's not only no knives, but no facsimiles.
Right.
There's a wide definition of what kids can or can bring to the school district, which are separate from this.
The other question I had on this, and again, sometimes you have to read these several times, especially these longer ones. But it looked like a quirk to me, and again, I may have misread it. When you look at the second paragraph, it talks about a volunteer who is a concealed carry permit licensee, then cannot transport children other than that licensee, licensee's own children. But what about a volunteer who is not a concealed carry permit licensee? Is the assumption there's no way they could have, legally have a...
Can't conceal and carry unless you have a concealed carry permit.
But does that, that includes just having a rifle in the trunk? I mean, hunters, people can have...
This policy doesn't address that.
What then? What happens? Rifle's not a concealed weapon. For the purpose of this policy, it's talking about the permit that allows you to, on your person, carry a weapon and move about. So this one would not be relative to having a weapon in the trunk, because there was...
We have policies.
That's not a volunteer policy. That was actually a district-wide policy as far as weapons and... I'm actually going to the website now to bring that up, that one, John, because I, Mr. McMullin, I think that's important that we review that too.
Okay, so this is...
There's about four different weapons policies.
Right.
There's one for...
This is specific to people who have the concealed carry permit.
Yeah, there's 57, 72, 37, 32, 17, 42, 17, 57. Okay, so we've got those three that sit out there. And the reason the three have to exist, the volunteer one became a unique one, it had to be reviewed, is we did have policy for students and we do have policy for employees, but a volunteer is a unique status that needed to be defined. How do you hold them responsible? So the policy had to be written to do that. And this one, can you read me the policy number on volunteer? 7217?
Yeah, 7217.
That's the weapons, yeah, that's the weapons volunteer. So 52, or 57, 72, 32, 17, 42, 17 are all weapons policies as well. The challenge in the committee attempts as best they can to go through the policies in Neola, this is where Neola's value comes in. They're paid to match these policies up to try to ensure that we've got consistent language that doesn't contradict one policy versus the other. So looking at the...
Sometimes they do and sometimes they don't.
Well, sometimes, sometimes they don't.
Sometimes we catch some things.
But in looking at that, I know we spent a great deal of time looking at that, just even the definition of that knife, the three inch, comparing it to the administrative guideline versus the current policy. If a student is in a play and using a prop, how is a prop defined? And with, you know, a building administrators for permission, after they've reviewed that prop, can they improve it? A lot of these policies are broad enough to do that. Now, unfortunately, I guess we aren't reviewing the student policy today, but that's where the student policy, even was very specific in looking at what can we allow students to get.
I think we did that last time.
Was it last?
Actually. And Mr. McMullin, the next policy, actually, 8660, Transportation by Private Vehicle, and that has a blurb about...
That's the one with the weapon in the back?
Concealed carry as well, so...
Uh...
You can see where we've had to add the paragraph in there.
Okay, yeah, the concealed weapon, I see it's being addressed. I guess now then my question simply becomes, what do our, how would our policies address a volunteer transporting someone in a car that has a weapon that's not concealed? Just the rifle in the trunk?
I don't know, 5772 specifically addresses it, but says, "The district prohibits students, staff, and visitors from possessing, storing, making, or using a weapon in any setting that is under the control and supervision of the district for purposes of school activities approved and authorized by the district, including but not limited to property leased, owned, or contracted for by the district, a school-sponsored event, or in a district vehicle." Then you have the word, the term weapon means any object.
And which, I'm sorry, which policy was that?
5772.
Right, that's not one where...
We don't have that one in front of us. And does that, I'm sorry, did that address volunteers?
Prohibits students, staff, and visitors from possessing. So does it specifically address volunteers? No, but I'm going to, it doesn't use volunteers, but I would say personally that that policy encompasses volunteers, you know?
Covers...
Covers volunteers also.
I guess I'm just wondering, is there a, is there, if it wouldn't, is there a reason to differentiate between a volunteer being able, being not able to possess a concealed weapon, but being able to have a...
Well, you have to truly look at the definition of what a concealed weapon is. Okay? A concealed weapon is a weapon that is not on the view so that somebody can see it. A case weapon is a weapon that is in a case and can't, and should not, or cannot be easily accessible. So that doesn't answer your question necessarily, but I think you have to start at that point as if you're going to distinguish between the two.
Well, that's fine. We can distinguish between the two, but I want to know that with that distinction, are we making that distinction and saying one is okay and one is not?
No, we're not.
I think what we, when I'm looking, I found my notes on 7217, what we were doing on this policy, the reason for the rewrite from Neola is based on the concealed carry law as rewritten in the statutes that are here. It was determined by Neola that districts such as ourselves, who had taken the position that we wanted weapons-free areas, had to rewrite our policy in order to specifically state that a volunteer or a guest coming onto our property would have to submit to these rules. We have to also post, I believe we've already started posting, no weapons?
We have not posted yet.
But that's part of the process of rolling out this, is that you have to identify where no weapons are allowed.
Schools will, you don't, schools are not required to post because it's illegal to have a firearm on school property.
But for a visitor coming to a ballgame who doesn't necessarily know that, to post it?
That's why it's wise to post nonetheless.
And that's what this policy said to that.
Right.
And if you read the second sentence of it, "This also includes any school-owned vehicle or any other school-approved vehicle used to transport students to and from the school or school activities, and any school-sponsored activity off school property at any school-approved or school-approved sponsored activity, event, or function such as a field trip or athletic event where students are under the jurisdiction of the school district." Now, that goes on further to define what weapons are. And again, it's that same sentence as in 5717 or 5217. It does not specifically address volunteers. Talks about students, staff, and visitors in that policy.
Okay.
So in order to, in order for anybody to transport students from the transportation's perspective, they have to notify the transportation office, and we have to have, get their license number and insurance before it is, technically, they're allowed to take students. Anything other than that is, from our point of view, unless we know about it, is not a school-sponsored or sanctioned activity.
So if a neighbor picks up their child and another child, that's not a volunteer or a school-sponsored activity? That's just the neighbor picking up the neighbor? This is totally different.
This is talking about when we're taking students to a school-sponsored activity and we're endorsing that school-sponsored activity in any form or fashion, whether that's from moving from the high school to a practice field within the district, or whether that's traveling to, you know, the egg will go on trap shooting things, and they won't have to transport that in separate vehicles.
Okay, I guess then, I just, you're telling me, based on the other policy, you would definitely state that a volunteer that has been formally recognized by us to transport a student could not have a weapon?
Any kind of weapon.
And I think the better way to say that is, up to this point, we have considered this policy applies to volunteers also. We've always viewed it that way.
That other policy that you stated.
Yeah, 7217. Whenever we're talking about weapons, it applies to anybody who's associated with a district. Because technically, if you're a volunteer and you're acting in the capacity of the school district, you are kind of part of the staff.
Or you're a visitor.
Or you're a visitor, yeah.
I mean, covers either way.
Thank you.
Okay, then we did kind of go into then transportation by private vehicle, Policy 660. And that again was brought forward with those statute changes.
But then why is this one not completed?
We already have this policy. So the only thing that's new, Mr. McMullin, is the bolded part. So we just had to verify that that's okay, that we agreed to add that bolded part.
This comes in a generic form back to the district?
Yeah, this isn't our direct, Neola doesn't give us back our direct policy, but it amends what they sent back as their just kind of basic coverboard policy. So it's always looks different to us when we look at this.
In policy, when we go through this, we compare what we have with what their suggestions are. So we have two different forms in front of us or that we can compare and discuss.
And in this format, it's difficult to see how that all lines up.
So this is not the...
Necessarily our direct verbiage in our policy.
It's just that that bolded language is going to be added. Because as I looked at this one, I mean, there were blanks that aren't filled in.
Right, right.
Okay, right.
Yeah, and that's why, you know, and it's difficult in the format here. You can't really shuffle back between our policies and this. It's almost like, yeah.
In the completed forms, when it's completed, in the cleaned-up form, the ones that we don't check aren't in there. It's more of a paragraph setup.
And I guess that was a question I had. I certainly appreciate how hard it is to do this. The reason why we don't have the clean, final version for us to just read through is because it has to be approved before you can even send it off to Neola.
That's correct.
So there's no way other than to have someone just sort of retype the whole thing?
And they don't, right. And they don't want us to send our policy with, I mean, they want this form back the way that, with just...
I see. They want it in this form.
So...
Just as she's exactly done this. You can understand from a person who's not on policy and hasn't sort of waded through it as much, it's just a little more challenging. That's fine, I understand because of the way it's done, but I was just curious.
Absolutely. It's not a great format for them, and, you know, I don't understand why they aren't coming forward a little bit. I think they are making roads in that direction.
We are supposed to have an online version very soon so that we can make the changes online, and hopefully I can bring those here instead of sending the paper back and forth.
But even in that scenario, the challenge that we've had prior would still exist, which is when we look at a Neola policy, if the district chooses to not opt for specific language or changes the language to be more specific to us, that policy becomes our policy and stays on our web. But when Neola re-updates, they re-update based on their database, not on our policy. So they'll send an update to 7217. It's based on the previous recommendation of what 7217 is. So the board or the policy committee is challenged with looking at our language, what the Neola policy is, and making sure that whatever the original changes were that has our language where it is remains true. What was the rationale that had us choose this paragraph as opposed to adopting what Neola had? And that's, that's the real conundrum that we face each time we come up with one of these longer policies, because it could be one line in our policy that we adopted. And Joan was very famous for being a wordsmith and looking at some of these things and saying, "This is a much better way to say this." When we look at the policy, and I think we're getting better now, recalling history, but sometimes we look at them and we can't really nail down, why did we elect this language and not the original Neola language? Or conversely, why did we adopt this Neola language?
However, as much as we're saying this about Neola, it's awful nice to have all these policy changes given to us.
Sure.
You know, legislative changes, instead of us having to research and try to be on top of it.
Sure.
They're being on top of it for us.
Incorporating changes in law.
Yeah, I don't mean it as indictment, it's just the reality of what we go through.
Very cumbersome.
The great benefit has been that sometimes policies sat for years and years and years without being updated, without being reviewed. And with the involvement in Neola, every single solitary policy in the school district's been reviewed within the last, help me, Greg.
Five years.
Eight years, five, six years. And every single policy has been updated. Every single policy is compliant with law. And I think it's also really ensured that the board has begun, become a governing body that deals with policy.
Right.
And that's, even although it's been a lot of paper and a whole lot of jiving things, it really has created and generated, I think, discussions that have been extraordinarily healthy.
It's forced you to actually...
And part of the reason why, Jerry, sometimes you're not able to explain some of the changes or why the wording said this. We took our old policy book, went through each policy page by page to ensure that we adopted what we had in our old policy into the old Neola or into the new Neola. So what you're dealing with is probably 20 years of different boards determining policy and setting that policy. So on some of these policies, to find the exact original intent would be very, very difficult.
And it's, you know, I think that always helps though, too. Maybe you don't even need that original intent at times. You have to look at what we're viewing and what we have in front of us today. 20 years ago was a way different place than it is now, and so it may not even protect some of it.
And when we do find things that we question like that, we figure if we're questioning this, is this exactly what we want or not?
Or should we change it?
Or should we change it to what, that it won't have to be explained to somebody in the future? It would be self-explanatory.
And the accessibility issue, I think, is critically important. There isn't any staff member who can get to policy instantly, nor is there any community member or parent who can't instantly find out what the policy is.
That's been a wonderful asset that Neola has.
That's been critical too for really ensuring.
Well, unfortunately, the last policy in the second review...
We're spending a lot of time looking at it.
I know. Is 9160, and that was a public attendance at school events. And again, this one was changed because of updates to the Americans with Disability Act and the, looks like Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act. And so those were, again, those legal changes that have happened, statute changes that happened that we need to comply with.
And again, this, the bold language is being added to ours, but the rest of it may or may not be in our existing policy.
Right.
I can't look...
You know what I can, what I can do for the board from now on is, you know, we've been trying to simplify the process and not be taking the time to literally have me go through each paragraph and say, "No change, it's the same," and just focusing on what Neola is recommending. But if that's what you need in order to be able to make a good decision on whether that language, I mean, I certainly can do that. You'll know that some policies I do that with because they're very long and there's a lot of changes. But others like this, where it was just two items that were changed in the whole policy, I didn't take the time to say, "There aren't changes and these things are checked," that type of thing.
Yeah. Could I be as full to say, though, it is cumbersome for Mrs. Zardi to do that? I know it's a lot of work for her.
It is, but I can do that, you know?
No, I'm not asking for that. I'm just, I'm glad to understand why, how this works.
What may, what might help is, and again, we, at Policy, we have a screen, so we put the current policy up on the screen, and then we look at what is on our individual computers, what Neola has. So if you have two computers at home and can hit up the policy as it currently is online and then compare to what we're recommending, that might be the easiest way to look at it.
And I think that would just help in your review, you know, to understand that that's how it works.
And I only made that recommendation based on, I know how much time she spends on it, just...
No, I absolutely sympathize.
Yeah, initially, yeah. But it is very confusing when you look at it this morning, you don't have our actual policy in front of you, so...
I wonder if there's any way for Neola to just send us, when they do the updates on the quarterly or semi-annual basis, to send just an updated version of those particular policies that were worked on previous, so that if we worked on a hundred different policies, and maybe you don't need that, but then they could give us those policies so that we could actually take a look at them, whether that's as individuals or however you want it, so that when you get this policy back, you can look at it again to further decide if that's making sense or not, because there's no reason why a policy can be changed or updated anytime. That's what this whole process is about, if there's questions or concerns with a policy. But just to get that policy, once Neola has updated it and to read it in its final version, if somebody wanted to do that. Otherwise, you have to keep track of the numbers and go back and look for it.
Although I do do that. I mean, I keep track of everything I send in, and then when it comes back, I double-check to make sure that the changes that we were approved have been made on the, what they have sent back to me. And then if it's okay, then I stick it in the booklet and I say, and I give it out to our principals. If it's not, there have been a few times where they've misspelled a word or something and it's like, nope. You know, I'll, sometimes I'll just fax that back to them quickly and say, "You didn't get this right." And so we do do that.
It just, it amazes me with all this technology that we have available, we're working off paper and scribbling changes in, I mean, even WordPerfect and whatever, Microsoft Office, you can take a document that's digital and keep everything that's original there and put in, in edited form, in red or something that changes. And I don't know, maybe that wouldn't work on this.
Well, logistically, they're working with fifty to a hundred different districts, so it makes it very difficult for them to send those out and bring them back and maintain the continuity and consistency that they need to have to get it out so that they can show that document, and then to bring it back in, it becomes even more difficult for them.
Mr. McMullin, that is what I did with this policy, seventy-two, seventeen. So I took our existing policy, I cut and put it in so you could, because it would have really been confusing if I had given you the Neola section with lines drawn and cr, I mean, so sometimes I will do that, just because I can tell it's going to be extremely confusing to look at the policy.
And typically, it will be in that paragraph format versus...
But I can't, I can't send this back to Neola.
Right.
I have to send it back, so it's...
Yeah, no, I appreciate the challenges, I appreciate all the work.
Are there any other questions or discussion on any of these policies? Then I would look for a motion to approve those second-reviewed, new or modified board policies in AGS. So move to approve? Second. We have a motion in second then to approve the policies as presented? Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay.